All the meeting order, this is. I got, I got too excited on that. This is the common council meeting of Tuesday, November 17, 2015. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Bickevich.
Here.
Verhaelen.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Fudge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Alright, see if I can calm myself down. Alright, item three is approval of minutes of November 3, 2015.
Kirkowski make a motion of your two minutes of November 3.
Um, who was the second? Guzzi was second. Alderman Guzekowski, roll call.
Alderman Bickevich.
Aye.
Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Item four is a public hearing on a conditional use amendment request submitted by Ursa Oak Creek. Um, the city clerk will read that into the record.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Ursa Oak Creek LLC and Ursa Major Corp. Doing business as Ursa Logistics and TEG Properties LLC for a conditional use permit amendment allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 6925 South Sixth Street. The applicant is Ursa Oak Creek LLC and Ursa Major Corp. Doing business as Ursa Logistics and TEG Properties LLC. The property owner is TEG Properties LLC. There follows the legal description, the date of notice is October 15, 2015.
Thank you, city clerk, Doug.
Thank you, good evening, I am Doug Seymour, I'm the director of community development for the city of Oak Creek. And this is a public hearing at the request of Ursa Oak Creek LLC and Ursa Major Corporation doing business as Ursa Logistics and TEG Properties for a conditional use permit amendment which allows automobile and truck engine and body repair as well as the storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property at 6925 South Sixth Street. The requesting this conditional use permit essentially it's a moving Ursa Logistics into that property. They are planning to locate their corporate headquarters, office operations, parking, dispatch, safety and truck maintenance on this property. And as was mentioned at the planning commission in the minutes, they, Ursa has major contracts with the United States Postal Service, so really it's not a trucking firm in the truest sense, if they're really not loading or unloading there. They're dispatching trucks to service their customers from that facility. Uh, the request to allow automobile and truck engine and body repair is to allow them to maintain their fleet of vehicles on the site. Now, in 2008, the conditional use permit was amended to allow outdoor storage in the side yard and to allow the use of crushed recycled asphalt for the outdoor storage areas. As you are aware, typically, uh, under city codes, parking areas for businesses such as these are required to be paved. There was a, essentially a waiver which was granted to the, the prior occupant, that being TEG or Black Diamond for the use of the recycled asphalt and there was an issue that came up, not an issue, but, uh, new information was brought to light during this process which identified a deed restriction on a portion of that property which would have complicated or provided complications should they have tried to pave, pave the property. And I will say that, and the applicants are here this evening, I mean, they would actually like to pave the property for their business, but, uh, there are complications in doing so given this, exist deed restriction. So, we met as late as this afternoon to come up with some, some language in the conditional use permit to allow them to proceed utilizing the existing recycled asphalt parking area. They would not modify that, it's using the same thing. We are okay with that, we just have language in there which states that provided that should the applicant ever expand that area, they would need to come back and either get a a waiver from the DNR, clarification from the DNR, but as long as they continue to use that in its current form, they are okay under the conditional use permit. Also, a, a small change as to the permitted uses, although we do, we've allowed outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment, uh, under the previous conditional use, the outdoor storage would be limited just to the vehicles and equipment that are utilized in this business and Ursa's business, so just to tighten that up a little bit. The planning commission, they have reviewed the proposed amendment, they have recommended that the amendment be approved. You do have a copy of the revised conditions and restrictions. And I will note that this is a public hearing, I would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed amendment to this conditional use permit, please approach the microphone, give your name and address and proceed to address your questions and or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
I'll make three calls for public comment, for those of you who haven't been here before, we require you to fill out a public comment form which is in the back, on the back desk. I don't know if anyone else wishes to speak, Mr. Degner, do you wish to speak on this item? No, okay, does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Alright, so first call, second call, third and final call for public comment on item four. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, move to item five, which is a consideration of ordinance number 2777. It would amend ordinance number 2692 allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles, business only vehicles as, uh, director of planning and development just told us, on, and equipment on portion of the property located at 6925 South Sixth Street in the first district. Open it up to council, questions or comments? Alderman Bickevich.
I just want to kind of reiterate what went on at planning, Doug summed it up just great. Planning really does have kind of a tough time with this because should it be paved, shouldn't it be paved, is it a hardship, the whole thing? Uh, the DNR thing, and there were complications of this one, the applicant was very congenial. He really did want to work with us, uh, with the city to get in there. And of course, there were a lot of unknowns to pave that, so I'm glad to see he, he got together with Doug and he came up with something, so. In the end, planning did, did recommend it through, but I just wanted to kind of let you know how it went there. So, I'm fine with it.
Okay, I also met with the applicant on Friday and I echo Alderman Bickevich's comments. Great business, obviously good for the city, uh, great use of that site, perfect logistical location for the service that you provide to the US Postal Service. So, customers would be more happy, the city would certainly be happy. Other comments?
I got it.
Alderman, Verhaelen?
Just one thing, uh, first of all, kudos to everyone that brought him to town. Anytime he can bring another business, the city is good. Uh, just one question for Doug, or Melissa, uh, in the DNR restrictions, are there any provisions in there for, uh, you know, if they have to add material to the parking lot or regrade it for any reason? Is there any restrictions to that, or no?
Well, the deed restriction, and this is a, a private deed restriction, that's not something that the city's been involved in.
Right.
But it, it speaks to if there are any, and Melissa's got the exact language, but grading or excavation.
Well, my point was, I mean, if the lot gets all full of pod holes and whatnot and they have to bring, bring in more aggregate material to, you know, level it off, and then they probably have to finish grading it to level it off again in the future. I mean, is there any provisions that prohibit them from doing that?
Not from the city's perspective, no, and I don't believe that, reading the language in the deed restriction, that that would be prohibited according to that deed restriction as well.
Alright.
Thank you, any other questions? Motion on five.
Kirkowski will make a motion that the council adopted ordinance number 2777 amending ordinance number 2692 allowing automobile and truck engine and body repair and storage of vehicles and equipment on a portion of the property located at 6925 South Sixth Street.
Roll call.
Alderman Verhaelen.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Bickevich.
Aye.
Alright, under new business, I'm actually going to shuffle the deck a little bit, I'll move item 10 up, it's a motion, it's a consideration of a motion to authorize the city administrator to enter into an amended market contract with the Journal Broadcast Group for advertising as part of the Packers Radio Network and the Brewers Radio Network to promote the City of Oak Creek for the 2016 regular season in an amount not to exceed $48,060. Doug? Hold on one second, Mr. Degner.
Yeah, threw me off there for a second.
Thank you, good luck.
Uh, two years ago, the city began its partnership, actually I think we're in our 30 year, with the Journal Broadcast Group to market the city via the pre and post game programming with the Packers Radio Network. And as part of the discussion this year, as part of the renewal, the council inquired and had some discussion regarding extending our marketing reach to go beyond the Packers season in order to reach an audience on a more year-round basis, and again, recognizing that a lot of the things we're trying to promote don't necessarily coincide with the football season. So, they asked that we, suggested that we inquire about the possibility of extending our marketing reach via marketing with the Brewers specifically. Uh, we have done that, and the proposal that is before you this evening extends our partnership to include both the Packers Radio Network and the Brewers Radio Network for the 2016 season. The advertising would run for all pre and regular season Packers games, so 20 games, and all 162 regular season Brewers games. There would be additional costs provided that, uh, both teams made the playoffs, but we'd be happy to see that happen.
Yeah, let's see, let's see if that happens. I'm less confident in this, this week, at least on the Packers side.
So, I mean, there is a, there is a, the actual physical proposal is, uh, contained in your packets this evening. Now, one thing to note is that as part of this combined marketing effort, there's an opportunity to have a professionally produced, and they can call it a singing musical image or jingle, prepared for the city's use, and while the cost of this production would be $4,000, that cost essentially would be credited to the city as part of the advertising airtime that we receive from, from WTMJ and both of those networks. So, in essence, the, that $4,000 would be included in that $48,060 marketing total. And one, and I'll, we do have Krista King here with us from WTMJ, and I guess it's Scripps Communications now. Who can kind of explain that in a little bit more detail? And, you know, why that might make sense for the city and what logistics behind that, if you have any of those questions? Uh, I will say that the community development authority has, has reviewed the proposal for, for both the Packers and the Brewers, as well as the, uh, the, uh, this combined marketing effort including the, the jingle, and they have recommended that, uh, that those contracts for 2016 be approved. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to any questions that the council has, recognizing I've got a few slides from, and Krista would be happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you have.
Yeah, Krista, why don't you go to that table and, uh, just flip that mic on?
Did you say I had slides?
I have slides.
Is that? Alright, so do you want to run through some slides? Or do you just want Krista to do it quick?
Steve, could I just interject?
Go ahead.
Doug, can you briefly, um, encapsulate what, why CDA is comfortable with this level of spending given the tourism?
Oh, absolutely, and I, I failed to speak to the fiscal impact of that, and I apologize for that. Given the, the sole source of, of revenue which funds this activity is to Fund 31 and is through hotel and motel room tax revenues. And, uh, if you recall, the city increased its local room tax from 6% to 8% last year. And as a result of that, is committed via state statute to spend 70% of that additional 2% on activities that promote tourism. So, well, we are, that money, which is about $130,000, which is earmarked for a tourism commission. So, that would be the source of funding for this, this item for the marketing. Now, take that into the future, given the changes that were adopted from the state and the governor's veto with respect to hotel motel room tax, those restrictions, uh, become even greater in, as the years go out and as the city is able to keep less and less discretionary revenue. And in fact, the money that accrues to that tourism commission becomes greater and greater, and that has, the money going to the tourism commission has to, must be spent on activities that promote tourism. So, mark, this marketing campaign, uh, would be geared towards tourism promotion. And we, CDA believes that, and believe, still has believed, that it's an appropriate use of, uh, that revenue to extend the city's reach on a year-round basis. And moving forward, uh, those decisions to a certain extent will be directed from the tourism commission, but for 27, 2016, the city still has control, sole, sole control of those funds. And again, bottom line, no general fund revenue is going towards this project at all, zero.
Krista, the, the jingle thing that Doug mentioned, so a jingle would be produced for $4,000, if we used it, that $4,000 would come off the 48,000, or would be included in that 48,000, it's not an additional $4,000.
Um, so the way that the $4,000 would work, um, normally, it would be a $4,000 investment on top of your Packers and Brewers spend. And the way that, um, it would be handled here is instead of charging the city of Oak Creek that $4,000, we would add on additional airtime value. So, you would still technically pay it, but instead of just paying for the jingle, you'd get airtime instead.
Okay, and is this something that, um, that you produce?
No.
Okay.
Um, so we, we work with a company called Coast to Coast, and they are a national company, all of the talent and everything is in Nashville, so you're getting like backup singers for Blake Shelton, people who are on CDs, it's like high-end writers, producers, vocalists, musicians.
So, is it one of those situations where if we don't like it, we don't have to use it, or once we're committed, we're committed?
If you don't like it, we'll redo it.
Okay.
So, I mean, you, you kind of tell us the feel you want to go for, um, and then we'll produce, write and produce from there, you'll see, um, like a script, a lyrical script. It should look like somebody in first or second grade wrote it, because it's supposed to be very basic, very elementary. And then when you get back the actual musical image, um, it kind of sounds, it sounds really nice. And then you hear that, um, if you don't like it, we'll redo it, that's pretty much it.
So, so as far as the number of ads, you said there's, obviously there's 162 games in a season. Would the jingled ads be addition to that one per game, or would that, if they had a jingled ad that day, that would be the ad?
Um, I guess I don't understand your question.
Let me, let me, take a shot at that. The jing, the, or refer to the jingle, actually forms the template for the ad that we're going, going to be doing.
Okay.
Now, we, within that template, we can tailor that to, you know, any number of different, uh, specific ads or messages.
Okay, so it serves as a template or a background for whatever we're going to do in the ad?
Yeah, it's part of your, it's part of your creative message.
Got it.
Um, and kind of what we had talked about was using your jingle almost as a shell. So, you know, it starts with some Oak Creek jingle, then we're promoting a business or restaurant or hotel or something, something that will draw people to the city of Oak Creek, and then kind of closing with the second half of the jingle.
Okay, other questions? That's one of the things that the council talked, talked about when we brought this forward, when we brought the Packer contract forward. They wanted to see that broader reach during the rest of the year, I think this addresses that. Alderman Kirkowski?
Krista, I, I believe at the CDA meeting, you said that we, the city would maintain ownership of that jingle.
Yep.
So, okay.
Yep, that's correct, so you can use it.
And with the, with clarification that, as long as we maintain a relationship with WTMJ.
Yes.
Right, um, you can use it on our stations, you can use it on other radio stations, you can use it in television ads, you can use it online, you can use it as your hold jingle when, when, you know, somebody calls the building.
Do the slides that we have tonight show the, you showed some nice slides at the meeting to talk about the, the area of coverage.
Sure.
And you also mentioned that the, the price, because we're, we already have contracts, the, the pricing stays the same
Yep.
in, in future years as opposed to other communities or other people who are involved in this.
Yeah, exactly.
If you might just kind of briefly, uh, we talked about the, I know, don't necessarily want to disclose any great secrets, but the, the price we're paying for four spots on game day for the Packers Radio Network is, would be fair characterization to say that we're getting it kind of probably below market?
Absolutely, um, when I, when I went back and looked at the pricing, I went to our sales support and I'm like, I honestly have no idea how they got this rate, like, the rate you guys are getting in Packers is phenomenal.
Tough negotiation.
Yeah, good job, guys.
Alderman Toman?
Is there any kind of possibility in the, in the format of this ad, if you would mention another business in Oak Creek for a cost share, does that, does that ever happen? Let's, let's just say, for example, we're promoting Drexel Town Square and we say, come see our, our great new restaurant, Water Street Brewery, is that, does that happen, or?
It can through co-ops, but it gets dicey legally, and as far as like auditing goes, I would suggest not doing it that way, um, just because it, it can get messy.
What, what the CDA had suggested is as a value added to our businesses, that we could potentially offer them those kind of 10-second, 10-second sandwich spots with, between the, the jingle, uh, as, as something that we do as a, a value added for our businesses. So, first and sincere, you're absolutely right, I mean, open with the, the jingle, then you got like a 10 or 15-second airtime in there. You know, farmer's market, uh, come visit the farmer's market at Drexel Town Square, October, blah, 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 and then you just close with that. So, there's a number of possibilities for doing that and kind of co-branding with some of our businesses, we'd obviously have to check out the, the legal ends of that, but I believe that there's absolutely a way we could do that.
Alright, thank you.
So, I guess if I'm hearing you, if we don't charge the other entities with Drexel Town Square, some restaurant, then it would probably be alright?
Yeah, yeah, in, in that circumstance, I would definitely say the cleanest way to handle it is to just kind of have it be a thank you for doing business in Oak Creek kind of a thing, rather than something that you're putting a dollar amount on and, and charging the businesses.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Go ahead, Alderman Verhaelen?
Well, I, I, I don't know if, if everyone remembers, but I was, I think one of the ones that suggested, you know, expanding the, the reach of what we had going on last year, but, um, or the summer rather, but, um, I had kind of a little bit of a, a different idea on, on maybe a a way to get more bang for the buck, I guess. And it's not that I have a, a problem with advertising during the Packers games, but it's kind of the off-season for things that happen around our city. So, we're advertising now into the winter months, and the biggest opportunity for attracting people to our hotels and our restaurants is summer months. So, I'm glad we're doing the, the thing with the Brewers, but, um, not to take away anything from the, from the Packers end of it, but I was wondering if we could maybe, uh, limit a little bit of the, the Packer time, maybe just do it during divisional games or something like that, and then put more money into maybe a few private ads on the radio that run that aren't really associated with any sports team to advertise the Oak Creek area like during Summer Fest or some of the other festivals, or some of the other things that go on, and somebody had actually said to me today that, you know, one of the big things that everybody kind of misses out and has nothing to do with sports is when college starts in the fall, you know, people come from all around the country to get their freshman students enroll at Marquette or UW Milwaukee, and there's thousands of people that come to town during probably a two-week stretch there where they're all looking for a place to stay that's got good access to downtown or UW and, you know, and, and we've got, you know, innumerable motels and, you know, a few good restaurants around, around the city here, and I think that, you know, expanding it to some private radio ads at certain times during the summer to focus on certain events or things that are happening in, in the Milwaukee metro area, I think we could get a lot, a lot more bang for the buck with spreading the dollars around it, we do have, uh, a little bit more.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Alderman Bickevich?
I'd just like to comment, uh, actually, it's, it's a pretty reasonable deal, uh, year-round. Uh, I've been associated with a lot of different places that do a lot of radio advertisements, particularly with the Bucks and, not the Bucks, but the Brewers and the Packers. So, this is, I, I think this is a pretty good deal. I particularly like the jingle idea, because once you tie the city to it, if we find the right jingle, I mean, you know, it, it will actually become part of the city, and it'll become recognizable like that. And I, you know, it'll be like, like encore, you hear that, that commercial, you know exactly what it is, or this is a bad comparison, but Green Acres, you know automatically when that comes up, we don't want to be that, but.
If they make us sing, it'll sound like that.
No, but if you can do that, before you even know what the ad's going to be, you're going to know it's Oak Creek. If, if we hit the right thing, and it'll be around for a long time, and I think we would be pretty cutting edge being the first ones to do this. Mark's right about his ideas, but there's, you're flat, you're the flagship, you have sister stations too, and you can just target a two-week period too for a, a low cost and take, probably take that jingle and buy two weeks' worth of time at slotted times for certain demographics, which wouldn't be a, a bad idea, because you're not depleting that fund for tourism. I, I actually kind of like it as long as it's done well, I, when I first heard the jingle thing, I thought, oh, that's kind of weird, but really, if, if, if it's done correctly, you'd really tie up the city very well with that. Uh, there's just certain things you hear, you know what it is, whether it's Star Wars or Monday Night Football, you know what it is, so. Uh, I guess that's what you want to do, you know, maybe become a ringtone one time. That's it for me.
Alderman Kirkowski, then Alderman Guzekowski.
Dan, uh, I swear you must have been at the meeting, because Krista talked about how the jingle for one community or somebody, been around for 20 years, it's the same one, and they associate.
A restaurant owner.
A restaurant.
This guy's been using the same jingle for 20 years. Um, I think he was in Idaho maybe, um, but, yeah, I, I, our, our guy, um, sold him that 20 years ago, and the guy's still using it, he uses it on his phone, so, I mean, four grand, that'll last a 20 years.
Alderman Guzekowski?
A few things I have, first of all, I think, you know, the idea is, is great in terms of, um, it, it kind of ties along with the branding that the city's going through right now, is our whole rebranding as a, as a, as a city at large. Looking at it from the sports aspect, I think Brewers, Packers, um, those are very far-reaching audiences, so I don't know how much more you can get for, you know, bang for your bucks, while I understand what Alderman Verhaelen's saying about local spots, um, to me, I think we're, we're better served in this one area here because of the number of people we can, we can reach. The Coast to Coast, I guess the question, I was just trying to look them, look them up online here. Did you have some videos of, of any jingles that you're going to?
I do not, no.
Okay. I was just going to check, I was trying to look and see, see if I could find something, but.
Go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, and one thing I, I just want to maybe comment on, uh, this certainly does not preclude us from doing other, um, marketing and outreach activities. But one of the things where you look at certainly is your reach and your frequency. And WTMJ, uh, their signal, and if we had the technology working and show you, uh, reaches a good deal of the state. And one of the things that we found out through our marketing research as part of the Gateway to Milwaukee and a tourism grant, tourism grant that they received last year, they did a market research on who stays in Milwaukee area airport hotels. And one of their major, major markets was central Wisconsin, and WTMJ gets there. And, you know, talking about the frequency aspect of that, I mean, certainly, given 162 games, when you look at what time those games actually run, and that would be in the pre-game segment, I mean, those occur during drive time for the most part. So, to have your message out there repeatedly, 162 games during drive, given this level of investment, I think is a good value.
Well said, any other questions or comments? Alderman Gail?
Uh, just, uh, I think from a procedural standpoint, typically I think, Doug, we're going to suggest that, uh, we entertain advertising type things through the CDA probably as a first stop in terms of before coming to council for specific recommendations, so I think that it gives you a better audience for maybe a body that's more suited to do that preliminarily.
I think so.
Until there's a tourism.
Till there's a tourism commission, yes, right.
So, Mark, sometime when the CDA meets and we want to discuss that, probably be best time to.
Um, can I interject a little?
Alderman Verhaelen?
Yeah, uh, one of the, one of the reasons I said, you know, doing independent radio ads, I mean, we don't have to be focused on the radio stations that are just in, in the Milwaukee area, you know, if, if, if you're having a, a, a big event here, say Summer Fest. You know, a lot of people come up here from the Chicago area, let's say, so there's nothing that says you couldn't buy a little bit of time on a Chicago station, or even if the Cubs come up here and play, you know, you could throw a little tidbit down there on one of the Chicago stations to get people to come up here and stay for the weekend, or two days maybe when the Cubs are up here for a series or something. Same thing with, uh, people that maybe come from Michigan or Iowa or something like that, you know, you can throw a couple little stipends out on some of the radio stations in other markets, that way when people are ready to come here, they know where Oak Creek is.
Yeah.
And we're possibly to. And where, and where possibly to stay and, and-
I agree. There's lots of, I was just talking procedurally, coming out of the, through the CDA budget, so for the time being-
Right, right. They should have first look at it.
Yeah.
All right. Nothing else? Motion on 10. Oh, come on up, Mr. Degg. Sorry about that.
In my conversation with Alderman Kowski this morning, I said I would check the statutes to see whether this room tax could be applied to a tourism area in the city. I have in mind the Vista, and I, I noticed that, that they do allow that. The reason for it is, is that we taxpayers are saddled with this $100,000 deficit in the Stormwater Fund. We have money that we could put towards it if we seek outside the box. And the box is not excessive spending because the statute states here, 66.0615 room tax forfeitures, that we can set up our own commission with representatives, and they only act for one year if the commissioners are, decide that this money can't be spent at the lakefront. Why not? Why, why, why spend it through our, this money that's hard-earned out the window to some advertising when we desperately need tax relief in this city now? Shall I read this part of the statute, Mayor?
No, I'm gonna have these- You don't have to read it.
Well, apparently, we did not have the Vista development going in. And the way I see it, at least they could pay for the, the portion of the road going into, around the cliff. To me, that's as much, as I've heard it, it's supposed to be a wonderful location for the city. Admittedly, it's only half the, the area there, but this is the point I'm making. We have the ability, possibly, to do that. Why throw money away on advertising when we need it right now?
I hear your comments. Unfortunately, this money has to be directed towards the kind of uses that the Director of Planning and Community Development laid out. The City Administrator has a comment?
Just for the, the rest of the audience that's here and maybe viewing at home, we had the privilege of having Mr. Arden's comments yesterday as part of a public budget hearing, and he had raised some concerns about our Stormwater Fund, which is a completely separate fund than our CDA, and you can't intermix those dollars. So we had a planned and purposeful reduction in the fund balance in that fund, which we explained yesterday. Certainly, there's, passion is part of the comment there, but we've got two very separate funds that we can't commingle or, or intermix. And I think has been pointed out by the Community Development Director and others, these dollars have to be spent only for advertising. That is part of the law. We think this is a pretty responsible way to take the 200 and, or $130,000, that's part of the 70% of the 2% that we added last year. This is about $50,000 of that directed as the state requires us to spend the money. And I, I think the comments are right on. This is a good reach and I think effective way for us to advertise.
Doug?
I will also note that, that the hotel motel room tax does offer upwards of $450,000 in general fund tax relief right now.
Every year.
Every year.
Yeah. Before I go to you, and it's also important to note that there's, there's nothing that prevents us from talking about Lake Vista in any of our ads that we do going forward. Alderman Gale? Oh, Alderman Guzikowski?
That's exactly where I was gonna go. You know, because of this is far-reaching, it gets the word out about Oak Creek. It gets people to Oak Creek. It gets them here to explore Oak Creek. By exploring Oak Creek, they're gonna find Emerald Preserve. They're gonna find the City Hall. They're gonna find everything else good about Oak Creek, the restaurants, Lake Vista. So once they get here, because they're gonna hear about us, they're gonna find out how great we are.
Good point. I should also note that Krista's an Oak Creek resident. Go, we'll see. All right. Anything else before I ask for a motion? Motion on 10.
Gale moves to authorize the City Administrator to enter into an amended market contract with the Journal Broadcast Group for advertising as part of the Packers Radio Network and the Brewers Radio Network to promote the city of Oak Creek for the 2016 regular seasons in the amount not to exceed $48,060.
Roll call.
I have got a, on the question.
Go ahead. Alderman Toman?
In regard, and moving forward on any playoff action, or that, do we, does this come back to the council then? Is that how that works?
But, oh, sorry. We should probably add some language in there just so that we don't, because given-
I think so.
The time constraints during those times, I mean, it'd be very difficult to orchestrate that, so.
Krista, any idea what the extra spending would be for playoff games, Brewers and Packers?
Good point.
Packers, you'd probably be looking at about $1,100 a game, max of four games, assuming they play the wild card and make the Super Bowl. There's a 10% premium on the Super Bowl and a 10% premium on the World Series. I don't think you're gonna have to worry about it for Brewers.
That's an honest answer.
Come on.
I'm not gonna lie to you guys.
I believe in miracles. The Lions beat the Packers.
That's true. That's a really good point. On Brewers, you'd prob, I believe it's about $200 a game on the high end, if my math is-
All right. So extra $10,000 freedom?
Add, just add some language that Director of Planning and Community Development can make that decision? Get the councils comfortable? Okay.
Yeah. So noted. Sorry.
If I might, procedurally, there's a motion on the floor. So make the original-
I didn't.
Guzikowski's second.
Yeah, I'll turn my-
Thank goodness the finance director's here. Tell me how to turn off the microphone. Procedurally, there's a motion on the floor, and there was a second. So in terms of that, the motion can be withdrawn, and another motion could be made.
Gale moves to withdraw previous motion.
Remake your motion?
Yes, second.
I'll second.
All right, Guzikowski's second. So then motion's withdrawn?
I would take a roll call vote in it. Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
All right, Alderman Gale, make that motion again.
Gale will move then to authorize the City Administrator to enter into an amended market contract with the Journal Broadcast Group for advertising as part of the Packers' Radio Network and the Brewers' Radio Network to promote the city of Oak Creek for the 2016 regular seasons in the amount not to exceed $48,060 with discretion given to the Director of Community Development for postseason advertising.
Guzikowski's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzikowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Bukavich?
Aye.
For Haley?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Thank you, Krista.
Thank you.
All right. Moving back to new business item number six is a motion, the consideration of a motion to approve the 2016 city health plan. City Administrator?
The Personnel Committee considered this earlier this evening, and we've got actually fairly slight adjustments to the 2016 city health plan. And those primarily are that a third party would conduct an independent audit for 2016 to verify that all plan participants are eligible for coverage, and that we would change the prescription drug refill threshold from 50% to 75%. And the committee did make a recommendation for those. We did get yesterday, if you remember last year, we had a room full of folks who were interested in our plan amendments and the costs. Yesterday, we did get a plan cost for 2016. I'm pleased to say, I think this is the fourth year in a row we're actually going to see a decrease in the premiums, very slight. Just to give you an idea of where we're at for our non-place and fire entities for single coverage in 2015, that's $713.72 a month. It's going to $707.95, and that's consistent on our various plans out there. So we're pleased with that. We had good negotiations with a variety of entities. We originally had 10% increases in some of our specific and aggregate losses. We were able to get those reduced and had some good pricing structure in some of our retiree pay as well. We think we're gonna continue to build our fund balance in 2015. We expect that that's gonna slow down in 2016, and we're anticipating some health plan revisions in 2017 and later. So one of the things that we are beginning the discussion, if you remember with the employees, we want to have a, a lot of notice of what we might be looking at. We want to have some input into that. The four areas that we're looking at in 2000, or 2017 and later, I've just lost my spot here a little bit, would be a consideration of a narrow network option. And what that option does is you get price concessions by steering business, if you will, to a smaller regional area. And there's some narrow network options with some quality health plans out there now. Spousal surcharge, which is becoming more frequent in, in private sector plans, we're looking at that potentially. Co-insurance, which we do not have now, and possibly adjustment of the deductible. So I want to make sure that the council's aware of that, that those are the areas that we believe we would most likely be looking at if we have to make adjustments to keep our plan and costs stable. And I think I'd be remiss to say that we, we are under council direction to try to stabilize our costs for both our healthcare and our retiree pensions. We have done that. So 2016 basically has the same dollars applied in the budget for healthcare for both active employees and retirees as we had in 2015. So working with our consultant, we've been able to achieve that again, and we're pleased to report that.
Okay. Questions from the council?
Mayor, just to make a statement, just to make a statement.
Alderman Gale?
I think incredible effort, I think, on behalf of the staff and our consultants to deliver, I think, in this day and age, reductions in premium care, premium for healthcare costs. I think that's a tremendous effort and should be congratulated. Employees should be happy. And, you know, the, the, the two minor changes here are actually probably no significant incremental cost whatsoever to employees at all. And I think for reality in 2015 in terms of healthcare costs, I think, a very good delivery in terms of the plan. And not only that, building on planned fund balances, I think, is an amazing feat in the last few years. So kudos.
Other questions or comments? Alderman Kavitch?
Just one regarding, well, actually, the health, the health plan sits fine with me. I don't have a lot of questions with that. But early in spring, Jerry, you, you met with Argus. They basically kind of look at our claims, and if they recover any discrepancies in the claims, overcharges, 50% of that would go to them, 50% would come to the city. Is there any merit to incorporating that in this plan, or is that something you can just do if we decide to?
We can do that independently, and the answer is yes, there is merit to that. So what this is, is there's a company that goes out there that analyzes your paid claims. And they look to make sure that those paid claims have been properly adjudicated, if you will. For any individual who's been through this review with telephone charges, historically, there were companies out there that reviewed the telephone charges. And what they did is if there were savings because you were being charged for service you didn't have or it was inappropriate, you got 50% of that savings back, and 50% went to the company. The firm that Dan's talking about, that he was aware of, that came our way, has a similar program, and yes, it does have merit, and we are looking at implementing that.
Okay.
Because there's actually no cost, and there's only an upside potential, no, no downside potential.
Zero cost to the city. Thank you.
Alderman Haley?
All right. Just a general question. Cause I haven't been involved in, in the last couple of years in the past here, but is the city self-insured at present, or?
We, we are. We're self-insured, and then we actually seek insurance for what's called specific insurance and attachment point and, and aggregate. So yes.
Yeah, cause we, not to bring the school district into this, but the school district looked at being self-insured, and it, it wasn't, wasn't prudent, I guess, to, to go into self-insurance. But I don't know if, if the city has looked into going back with a regular carrier or not. I just asked, thought I'd ask the question.
The answer is yes. We, we have the, one of the options that you have on there in the narrow network, that's more of a traditional plan as opposed to self-insurance. It's a little bit of a combination. So that is something we have given thought to. I think there was a lot of discussion from the employees last year that we could go to a more traditional plan, which, for instance, the state's offering. Most municipalities are coming away from that because they didn't have the, the ability to basically vary the, the plan benefits, and they were seeing cost escalations. If you wanted to stay in that plan, you were seeing those costs. And I think all of you are aware that the, the revenues are frozen permanently, so that doesn't work. And that's why you've made the direction that they, to keep and stabilize their healthcare costs.
Are you guys paying into a, a stopgap carrier as well?
We, we do. So we, we buy what's called specific insurance. We have a $100,000 attachment point. So anything, any claim that's over $100,000 is paid by that specific carrier. And then if you have enough of those specific claims, there's what's called an aggregate attachment point. And then, so if you have a really bad year-
Right. That's why I asked the question. How are we, how are we faring?
So, well, actually, quite, quite good. This year, we had two years where we drew the fund balance down a million dollars in each of two years. I think the last three or four years, we've done very well. And that insurance is probably close to half a million dollars as part of the, the insurance cost. So we, we pay into that every year because the potential claims out there are pretty significant.
Yeah. Because, the reason I ask is because we just went through this with, at the school district, and we were actually looking at going to self-insured as well. And we carry insurance through United Healthcare, and, and we had our HR person really go into some hard negotiations last year, and we ended up only getting a, a 5% increase. And I think this year, they were pretty much threatening to, to throw the book at us, I guess. And, and it wasn't because we had a bad year, but it's just the, 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 the norm, I guess, to, to test the waters and see how much you can squeeze out of everybody that you're carrying insurance for. But we got them down to the 10% area again, and that's why we didn't go with self-insured, because they enable us to keep our full network. Everybody had the same doctors as when we had the insurance through the, we had trust and everything. I mean, they're a really good outfit. So I don't know if the city could actually do that, because I don't think you have as big of a pool as we do with the school district. But just, just a suggestion to look at it.
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Guzikowski?
I just wanted to touch base on a few things here. First of all, the, the narrow network option. I think we're in our third year at Western States is where I work as my day job. Palladium, I don't know if we can mention names or not, but Palladium Healthcare is who we use. We have an onsite company that, they've got an office that's there with office hours, but there's also offsite locations and options for two or three, three locations based upon where people live, based upon the proximity to the plant. It's been very beneficial for most employees, most, mostly from the standpoint, they get to spend more time with their doctor, and they feel they get more quality care. It doesn't exclude, you have the option to opt out, and, and you also have the option to go with, you know, the other carriers within your network, but you're just gonna pay a little more money to do it. So the co-insurance for us has raised as well this year, and as well as our spousal surcharges. So my wife does work for the school district, but she's currently on my healthcare plan.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I think that just points out, you know, we're trying to keep pace with where the market is. And, you know, we have used the comparisons to the private sector and not just the public sector, and I think that has been beneficial to what we've been able to achieve.
And that review happens every year.
It does.
All right. Motion on six.
Do we need to, Melissa, do we need to list the two cost containment measures in there that we added or not? Or just, just approve the plan as a whole? Or just, just approve the plan as a whole?
Say approve the plan and note, note the changes that's been discussed.
Okay. Toman will make a motion to approve the two thousand sixteen city plan, health plan with the caveat of the two, the third party audit and the mail order refill threshold.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye. Item seven is a discussion, council discussion on direction regarding the scheduling of two thousand sixteen regular common, combined common council meeting dates. I'm thinking that that's related to July?
Or August.
Or August. Is that related to what we did last year where we suspended one of the meetings or canceled one of the meetings in July?
Yes, and in the report, it does note that there's five Tuesdays in August. But I know, if I recall last year, it was that, that third meeting in July that council chose to.
Yeah, the second council meeting.
The second council.
Correct, third week, second.
Okay, so any comments, questions? Alderman Kukowski?
Well, one is personal, the other one is simply, it's the Tuesday after the Fourth of July holiday, I didn't know how that would affect, you know, plans or travel or anything like that.
You mean the first meeting?
The first meeting in July.
So, I guess that's why we're here, 'cause there, I think the deputy clerk raised this as, as did the city clerk. Is that date problematic, being on the day after the Fourth of July?
I won't be here anyway.
I, potentially, I will be in, in Poland.
All right, so two of the Aldermen have indicated they wouldn't be here for the July fifth meeting, is that what you're telling me?
What week is that?
July five.
July fifth, first meeting in July. So, can we, can we traditionally, or can we cancel the first meeting in July and have the second? How's that work for everybody? Good?
Sounds good to me.
All right, I guess for our purposes, we're gonna cancel the, we're gonna schedule that meeting, the first meeting in July will be that sec, or third Tuesday in July and we will not have a meeting on the July fifth. Okay? So, we need a motion on that?
Just discussion.
Just discussion, all right. And then, moving to item eight, is a consider, a consideration of resolution number one one six six three dash one 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 seven one five. It designates official holidays for two thousand sixteen. Unless we're creating any new holidays, those are pretty standard, correct? So, I don't anticipate a lot of debate on it unless somebody just wants to talk.
We have a jingle to go with.
We have a new jingle to play on those holidays. All right, motion on that one.
There we go.
Don't be in a rush, dude.
No, I had to turn the microphone on here. Kukowski make a motion to consider resolution number one one six six three dash one 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 seven one five designating official holidays for two thousand sixteen.
Kukowski second, a roll call.
Alderman Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
All right, item nine is a consideration of a motion to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars and eighty-one cents. City Finance Director is here, off of her deathbed to inform us of any additional information we need. Questions? Alderman Kukowski?
Bridgeton, this, this might be slightly off topic, but I think it's relevant to item fourteen with regards to when we buy new police cars. Do you, maybe you know this, maybe you don't, but do we look at the car and shuffle it into another city department or do we trade them in or what happens to the old cars?
All of the above.
Budget wise?
All of the above. We do look at the needs of the other, we do look at the needs of the other departments and if not, we do use them for a trade-in.
Okay, other questions? Anything?
Yeah, on.
Go ahead, Alderman Toman.
On a fire bargaining specifically, it starts with, I mean, most of those are October dates, right, the charges on those? Are we, are we incurring those costs, legal counsel to city or is that a fire department to legal?
Legal counsel to the city. So, anytime that legal counsel reviews the file, responds to an email, responds to a phone call, trying to get the dates, or if legal counsel has reached out to the fire department representative, those are all those costs.
Okay, do we have any?
As well as creating any surveys and prep work.
Okay. Do we have any idea of the reach out from the fire department to legal or?
From the fire department, not unless it's in response to legal asking for dates.
Are those all scheduled to, are those all related to scheduling of a potential meeting with the?
Yeah, it's more than that.
What is it?
The, the preparation of comparables and settlements, so that, we've already had that, so that's what that primarily is involved with.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion?
Mayor, just a note for.
Alderman Gale?
Alderman Kukowski's benefit, CIP Committee does in fact look at item, item number fourteen for the police and fire, or replacing vehicles program, it's done annually, typically replace five squad cars every year, so. With that said, I will make a motion and authorize the city, sorry, I'll move to approve the vendor summary report in the amount of fi, eight hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, eighty-one cents.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Twelve?
Kukowski will make a motion to grant an operator's license to Rick Simalek, six two three four, West Whittaker Avenue, Greenfield.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
And fifteen.
Kukowski will make a motion to grant a change of agent to Loves Travel Stops and Country Stores Inc., DBA Loves Travel Stop, number four thirty-two, ninety-six fifty, South Twentieth Street, from Sean Lees to Charles Campbell, sixty-sixy-one, South Sixth Street.
Gail, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kukowski?
Aye.
Bakovic?
Aye.
Verhaelen?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kukowski?